The other four board members are also participating and I'll call their names and just ask that they acknowledge their presence. First we have Attorney General Michelle Henry.
Good afternoon, President.
Corrections Expert Harris Cooperday.
Good afternoon, President.
Psychiatrist Dr. John Williams.
Good afternoon, President.
And Victim Representative Marcia Grayson.
Good afternoon, President.
While it may appear that some matters during today's sessions are handled quickly, I wish to confirm that extensive preparation for these session has been done. For these session has been done by each member of the board. This afternoon's session will likely last until about three o'clock. If you wish to have an agenda, it's available on the Board of Pardons website. We'll first take up under Agenda Item Two, return calendar cases thereafter. This afternoon, there are three calendar cases and there are three possible outcomes for these cases. One, an application is recommended, which means that we recommend to Governor Shapiro that clemency be granted to an applicant. Two, an application is denied, which means that a recommendation for clemency will not be granted at this time. And three, the board could vote to hold an application under advisement. This is similar to a continuance that could be done for various reasons if the board is not prepared to vote on a case. I want to stress that the ultimate decision to accept or reject the recommendation of this board is solely at the discretion of the governor. In addition, the governor is not required to act on a recommendation within a specific period of time. And so with that, I'll call the first counter case to be heard by the board this afternoon, James Rivers.
Governor, we're going to admit Mr. Rivers' brother, Rashid.
Leading as Superintendent Clark.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivers, will you unmute and turn on your camera?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
Great.
Sorry about that.
Do you have a statement you'd like to make before the board? And then we'll just go down the line, I guess, in individual statements and then we'll open it up for board members who might have any questions.
Okay, sound good. I do have a statement. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Rashid Rivers. I'm Mr. Rivers' brother. I would like to express my commitment in supporting Mr. Rivers emotionally, financially, and spiritually. Releasing Mr. Rivers from prison will be a significant challenge for him. He'll need to, he'll need help adjusting to society after being incarcerated for such a long time. Many aspects of life has changed, including lifestyle, culture, and work. I'm confident that I can help coach him through these obstacles. I'm currently a manager with FedEx Freight where I, I'm able to help assist Mr. Rivers in securing a well-paying job. He's particularly interested in obtaining his CDL as our driver's starting salary ranges from eighty-five thousand to ninety-five thousand dollars annually. Additionally, Mr. Rivers expressed a desire to join the church where my mother was a member until her passing in two thousand twenty. This church actively supports the less fortunate, provides a platform for individuals to address their personal issues. I'm committed to helping Mr. Rivers find a position within this church community. I've noticed significant growth in Mr. Rivers. Even though he's made poor decisions in the past, after much reflection and considering the courses he's taken at the institution, I believe he's no longer poses a threat to society or himself. In conclusion, I hope he's given a chance to change his life and prove himself. The true test of redemption will be whether he can rebuild his life with his family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cannon, if you have a statement, we'll hear it now.
Yes, my name is Tracy Cannon. I am James's cousin. And I just wanted to say that I'm honored to be able to speak on his behalf. My cousin James is the oldest of three sons. He had a very good life growing up. His, he didn't, he nor his brothers ever needed or wanted for much of anything. His brothers, his two younger brothers went to private school. They all graduated high school. James made very poor decisions in the past that cost him his freedom. But I know just from all the support that he'll have on the outside. I'm a manager with the Commonwealth, a nurse manager. My brother owns his own business. He has said that he will get him trained in pest control. He can do that if he wants to. I myself, I have a small business that I run that if he needed anything, whether it's to help him get his driver's license. We're, we're a very small family, but we're a very close family and we support each other and we have our whole entire lives. And that's not going to stop if James is given the opportunity to rejoin society. He has two children. He has three grandchildren now. And I believe that the reason for prison is to punish, deter, and rehabilitate. And James has been, he's not gotten in any trouble since he's been in prison. He's been, if there is any such thing as a model inmate, it would be him. And I believe with all the support that he has from his family, that he will be very successful if he's given the opportunity to be released. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from board members? Or either of these two individuals?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Superintendent, you're on the call and I think we spoke with you earlier. Is there anything else you wish to add?
No, sir. Like I said earlier, you know, taking a look at Mr. Rivers and his case and his behavior while he's been incarcerated. I can't stress enough how the years of incarceration really affect someone to the point where, you know, sometimes it's hard to articulate. It's, it's hard to, you know, get inside of that person and to see the remorse, the sadness. But being a corrections professional and being inside of the business, I feel like I have a pretty good judgment of character. I've participated in hearings like this before and I've always given my name behind and support behind the folks that I feel are truly remorseful, that have truly changed their life. And I think Mr. Rivers is an excellent candidate for commutation so that, you know, if he is granted and he goes home at fifty-six, fifty-seven years of age, you know, his life of service that started while he was incarcerated is going to continue out in the community. I really believe that. I really believe that he's going to be that advocate to the youth and to steer them off of the path that we see in the city of Philadelphia that affects my family and the family of many staff members here at Chester. So just again, thank you for the opportunity. And I'm sure Mr. Rivers also appreciates this chance. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know Assistant District Attorney Sarah Boyett is on the call. Sarah, is there anything you wish to add?
No, Lieutenant Governor, thank you. If there's any question from the board, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next case, Charles W. Slaughter.
Sir, real quickly, we're going to remove these supporters from the room and there is a speaker in opposition.
Okay, great, I'm sorry.
No problem. So the person that we're going to bring in, wait, hang on one second. Could you confirm that the person that we bring in is Nelson Hollerway? The name that they've logged in under doesn't match.
I see a Noah D. Simone. Can you unmute yourself and turn your camera on?
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, what case are you here for, sir?
One of my former clients when I was a student attorney will be here before the board, so I'm just observing the proceedings.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we can move on. It appears that this person didn't log in.
Okay. The next case is Charles Slaughter. Madam Secretary, can you just identify, I think, James Allen?
Absolutely. Pastor James Allen is a supporter of Mr. Slaughter and we are readmitting Lauren Smith, who we heard from earlier, and a representative of the Philly District Attorney's Office.
I see Mia Jackson's from the District Attorney's Office.
Correct, my apologies.
Mr. Allen, if you can unmute yourself and turn your camera on, we can get started. Great, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Can you hear me? Oh, good, good.
Yes. So we'll just, if you want to read your statement now and then we'll have an opportunity for questions.
Okay, and, and I'm very, very nervous because this is a very serious situation. I'm very thankful for you guys and, and I'm going to try to do the best that I can. So my name is James Allen. I want to thank the Board of Pardons for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Charles Slaughter. I prepared a statement and I'd like to read it. First, I'm going to talk about how I met Charles and why he asked me to speak for him. We grew up in the Mantra neighborhood with the Young Race Society, Manchester Community Planets. We were all gang members, okay? But Herman Rice and Andy Jenkins and a lot of the political leaders of the community people took us from being combative to non-combative, took us from being destructive to non-constructive. And so we started out with basketball leagues and basketball teams. He was very good. I was the president of Youth Association for Crime Prevention and for the Boys and Girls. I've been for YGS. And Mr. Slaughter was one of our members. So he moved out of the neighborhood and wasn't under the direction of the Young Race Society. Herman Rice did this anymore. And he got into a bad environment and of course, we all know that we're here today because some bad things happened. But after he got incarcerated, he called us and we contacted him because he was always a good guy, just made a bad mistake. So we incorporated a lot of things that we were doing and back to prison with our prison ministry. He was a trustee. He worked out of the prison. He stopped a lot of conflicts in the prison. We had a big incident here in West Philadelphia. They're over the bridge with fighting the Black Bottom Kids. And Charles Slaughter's nephews and family is over the bridge. And I called him and when we talked, when we visited him in the prison, to get those two gangs together to stop the conflict. Whatever he did worked because he called those guys and we had a big meeting at St. Andrew's St. Monica Christian Christian Church and we came up with a peace agreement. And he's done so many things since he's been in prison to show remorse. Now, he called me when he first got locked up and every time we talked on the phone, he said, Jimmy Allen, I'm so remorseful for what I did because I messed my life up. I messed the family life up and everything. But knowing him as the community person that we all know, we know that everybody deserves a second chance. So how did I get here with the commutation? Some of the political people, some of the community people and the governor came to Drexel Dawnside Center. I work at the Drexel Dawnside Center. I'm on the commutation board. I'm on the Drexel Law Clinic, the Stern Law Firm, I'm on the Klein Law School. We have students and interns. And we all got together at the commutation program came here to seek commutation for guys in our neighborhood that we knew deserved commutation. I grew up with a lot of guys and they need to stay right where they at. But I grew up with a lot of guys that had come home and done very well. And Charles has showed over the years all the wonderful things that he can do and that he turns his life around. But he still had to stay in prison because he made a mistake. I'm thankful for the opportunity to see you guys and I'm only here because he showed remorse for decades. So what does remorse look like to me? Remorse looks like you're a trustee. Remorse look like you haven't gotten in trouble. Remorse look like when we asked you to compete with some of the things in the neighborhood that your family has gone through and you have a strong voice and you did it. Remorse looks like, thank God for commutation because a lot of people have made mistakes, ladies and gentlemen. A lot of people have made mistakes. But they deserve another chance. Now, I'm not a very, I'm not a preacher or anything, but I'm very spiritual. The Bible says forgive so you can be forgiven. Okay, so we got an opportunity to show somebody and give them a chance to come out and be remorseful and help us in the community. We welcome him. I've talked to all our groups and all our leaders and everything. We all like Charles. We want Charles to come home. I'm thankful for the opportunity to work with the Pardons Program and the commutation program and you all sitting here. And I'm just praying that he comes home and we continue to show that rehabilitation works. We're showing that commutation is deserved. We're showing that given an opportunity, okay, to better your life and to change your life and to help people who went through the same things that you went through, but show them a better way out. That's why we're here today speaking on behalf of Charles.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from board members?
No, Governor, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
And thank you all so much, so much. And I just want to add one thing. So we have a program here. He's coming to the Wellness Hub. He's coming to our cancer clinic. He's coming to our Boys and Girls Sports Clinics and all. And he's already spoken to some of the people by way that we're doing it by Zoom. But we have a program here. We get them social security cards. We get them set the passes. We have a computer room where they learn how to do computers and they learn how to do the phones. And so he's coming to our program. He's not just coming home. He's coming. We have mentors. He'll be mentored around the clock, seven days a week. We have different programs. He talks to people if he needs to talk to somebody. And also, some of us in our program are reentry people and they know the way to stay out. So, so he's not just coming home. He's coming to our program here at Drexel University, Mantra Civic Association, which is my group. And I also have an office at the Youth Studies Center, Forty-Eighth and Harvford. And I mentor youths up there and he's talked to a couple of them by way of Zoom too. So given an opportunity for these kids to see somebody like him who made a bad mistake and show remorse and is very sorrowful. And just all we need to do is get him a part of our group. And I appreciate you all so very much. God bless you.
Thank you. Counselor, do you wish to add anything?
Thank you all so much. I just wanted to add one more quick statement on behalf of our client and our friend. As you all know, as part of our legal clinic, I've had the chance to support Mr. Slaughter for four years in his pursuit for commutation. And he's left an indelible mark on me, our team, and our community. His journey and his growth and our work together have been a powerful and transformative experience that I will carry with me always. And in dialogue with him, I've learned a lot about his life and all the different people that he holds dear. I've spoken with people from every chapter of his life, from his childhood, friends who shared stories of his kindness, family members who have stood by him fifty years unwaveringly, and even former cellmates who credit him with helping them change their lives for the better. Our clinic submitted a supplement that you all have that highlights many of these perspectives. And through all of these interactions with him over the years, I've come to know him as a gentleman of immense character, a fierce Scrabble player, and a genuinely good soul. Every exchange with him without exception circles back to his victim, Mr. Wyatt. A name he utters with a weight of sorrow that lays bare the anguish he feels for the life he shattered and the loss he imposed on the Wyatt family. The Wyatt family had been very good to Mr. Slaughter and he is so ashamed of the pain that he caused them. His selfishness and his thoughtlessness back then are truths of his past that he confronts with no excuse. He is deeply ashamed and he recognizes that what motivated him back then to start a fight just to prove his manhood is shameful. And today, he says he doesn't turn his fear or his anger or his need for acceptance on anyone else. He's not that man anymore. Should you recommend him and Governor Shapiro grant him clemency, he will not walk alone. He will be embraced, as you've heard, by a strong community of support, a strong network of friends, and a strong institution. Finally, I'll say Mr. Slaughter's journey is a testament to the power of accountability, self-reflection, and growth. Charles is a man of very few words, but his actions are the best demonstration of remorse and growth. Thank you so much for considering his application and for a second chance to speak to you all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from board members?
No, Governor, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next case.
Board members, we are going to admit three supporters on behalf of Mr. Taylor. We have Diane Sears, which is his home provider, Julia Cass, and George Limbach. And we will also admit Sarah Boyett from the Philly DA's office.
Ms. Cass, how are you? Can you hear me today?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfectly.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Well, I think let's just get started with you and if you have a statement to read, we'll hear that and then certainly open it up to any questions from board members.
Has anybody else spoken yet?
No. You'd be the first.
That's okay, Ms. Cass. You can go ahead.
Okay, so is the board seeing this?
Yes, we are all here.
Okay, good. Okay, so hello, my name is Julia Cass and I'm speaking to you from New Orleans, Louisiana, where I now live. For many years, I lived in Philadelphia and worked as a reporter for the Philadelphia Inquirer. I met James Taylor in nineteen ninety-three when I became the paper's prison reporter and spent a lot of time at SCI Greaterford. There, I met a number of lifers who were leaders of various organizations in the prison and who were highly regarded by the prison staff. I decided to write a profile of one of them for the Inquirer Sunday Magazine because I was interested in how people change and what I called in the article, "Life After Life." James Taylor, who was in his early nineties, early fifties at the time, drew my attention for his optimism, the anti-recidivism program he created and led in the prison, his honesty and remorse about the murder he committed and the diary he kept of his personal development behind bars, which he shared with me. Since you are about to make a very momentous decision about his future, I want to tell you what I learned about him through personal experience and my interviews with others and why I strongly support his commutation. He wrote in his diary that as a young man, he was a nobody going nowhere. A high school dropout, alcohol and drug abuser, and petty thief who had a profound sense of worthlessness and a deep anger at his father for the way he was treated as a child and at himself for failing at everything. Jobs, his marriage, even crime. In prison, he joined AA and became a devout Muslim. He told me that when he first got into prison, he kept telling himself, reassuring himself, I guess, that he didn't mean to kill anybody. But as time went by, he realized and took to heart the fact that he had actually taken the life of another person and that to live with that, he needed to direct his life to a positive purpose. He began to taking every opportunity to improve himself. A whole lot of programs and courses offered by the prison or brought in by volunteers. Some of those volunteers became supporters and their friendship gave him a sense of worth. A turning point for him when he emerged as a leader came when he, late eighties, when he took part in a decision-making program called Thresholds that was brought in by a group of volunteers. Then as an inmate teacher, when the volunteers left and turned it over. When he became the head of the Atonement Committee of the lifers organizations, he, in a sense, applied the decision-making principles of Thresholds to reentry and he created a program called People Against Recidivism, or PAR. I attended a number of those sessions and witnessed his leadership and motivational skills. On more than one occasion, I remember very well being in the deep depths of Greaterford and watching him interact with the young men there. And I realized how far he had come from that, nobody, nobody going nowhere, to a man with a purpose. The prison administration thought highly enough about the program to make it his prison job and the Pennsylvania Prison Society named him its inmate of the year. He is a poster child for rehabilitation and a prime example of the statement that people are more than the worst thing they ever did in their life. I lost touch with James Taylor when I left Philadelphia in the nineties, but five years ago, we reconnect and I have been communicating regularly on the email system of the prison and also weekly phone calls. During that time, I was out of touch. PAR expanded and as you will hear from Mr. Limbach, now has a business in Philadelphia that employs people just getting out of prison. That's pretty impressive for a program started by a lifer in a maximum-security prison. He's also developed an idea for a full-service reentry zone that would include housing, jobs, and a business incubator. I have become a friend and a sounding board for his ideas. Even though I don't live in Philadelphia, I come up there regularly and I plan to be a part of his life from now on, really. I visited him in Phoenix three years ago and I was pleased to see that he was remained in good health and, and kept his optimism about the future. He's not somebody that's going to flounder around trying to figure out what to do or let a setback stop him. I see no purpose served by keeping this good man in prison and every reason to believe that he will be an asset if released. He has become an expert on reentry and his burning desire now is to be part of the solution to the problems of recidivism, missing black men, and urban poverty. I urge you to give him a chance to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cass. We'll hear from Diane Sears. If she can unmute herself and turn her camera on. Mr. Limbach, if you're available, we can go to you and come back to Ms. Sears.
Okay, yes. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. It's my privilege to speak to on behalf of the cause of Mr. James Taylor. I won't be redundant with the comments that Ms. Cass indicated in terms of his personal development that he's gone through. But I will wholeheartedly affirm those and can recognize that I have seen them as well. In my brief time with you, I'd like to focus rather on the impact that, that he has had on other men, particularly young men, in terms of preparing them, helping them to grow and be prepared for release, both through his work with PAR in Greaterford and now Phoenix, as well as the impetus that he was for our, for the development. I've known Mr. Taylor for almost fifteen years as the- As the founder and developer and leader of PAR, People Advancing Reintegration. And it was envisioned by Mr. Taylor as a peer-to-peer program. That provided guidance, planning, uh, moral support and individuals at Greaterford approaching. And preparing for parole release. And I would stress that he took this, I I can only say altruistic approach. Not in any way into assuming that he would ever have the opportunity for release, but he was still trying to prepare others and to. Really prevent the horrendous experience of recidivism that that we all experience. Uh, as a peer-to-peer program. It it relied heavily on the wisdom of and experience of what I call old salts inside. Uh, many of the lifers who had grown and and matured. And transformed themselves and were clearly not the same people that had come in. And wish to share and uh, impart that experience. On the younger inmates and hopefully impact them in a positive way as they prepared for release. Now, as a volunteer in the program, I was mostly a silent observer. Offering guidance to Mr. Taylor and his planning team when asked. Uh, but mostly had the privilege of observing them in the process of organizing. And conducting this program, which in my many years of experience, uh, would put many college courses to shame in terms of its. Uh, rigor and its organization. Uh, PAR was and is continues to be. An embodiment of Mr. Taylor's vision for life after release. And again, the reference to the PAR reentry zone, which would meet individuals upon release. Provide employment, housing and support services on their journey to reintegration. One of the driving forces behind that was the, as I mentioned, the horrific recidivism. I think the statistics are both locally and and nationally somewhere around sixty-five percent uh, recidivism. And I'd be hard pressed to find any other organization. If you had a a a school, a hospital or a business that had a two-thirds failure rate, uh, we would not be accepting it. And neither did Mr. Taylor, and he hasn't wavered from that goal. And it was not an idle vision. He recognized that one of the reasons people were coming back was because of the difficulty in obtaining meaningful employment. Which is really the single biggest contributor to success or failure in a re-entering citizen. What he did, which I thought was absurd at the moment he did it, was he challenged myself and a group of volunteers to provide employment. For individuals upon release, since that was one of the biggest determinants. I remember my first uh, reaction was that's absolutely crazy, no way we can do that. And after meeting at a kitchen table with a group of people for two years. PAR Recycle Works was given life. It's a transitional employment model. So rather than being able to employ five or ten people for a long period of time. We employ people for four to six months, give them job skills. Give them support, give them assistance in then getting into the mainstream, but most importantly. We give them an immediate paycheck and sense of worth. And because the transitional model is a, this social enterprise, we're coming up on having supported. Just under two hundred people in the nine years that we've been working. And I would emphasize that. About seventy-five percent of those people are parents. So you could multiply that number of two hundred several times over in terms of the positive impact that this has had. One story, and I think this. This, I think, can be abused right to um, Mr. Taylor and his vision. I met one of the newer gentlemen who was in our loading dock. And I introduced myself and asked him what his goals for PAR were. Usually it was to start a business or get a new job, and he said to me. Yeah, I I have eleven and thirteen-year-old boys and my, my biggest goal is to get my boys to respect me again. This is what Mr. Taylor has been all about and what he has accomplished. And I will go on to say that that gentleman actually had just completed the story. On his first day of work, he asked if he could wear his hard hat home to show his boys, so. I I, you you can attribute that to that, we, PAR Recycle Works now has, as I say, almost two hundred individuals. We have a very thin staff of four full-time people, two of whom themselves are returning citizens. And one of them was another fellow that went through this process a few years ago, Andre Davis. And he was a partner with Mr. Taylor in in running PAR Recycle Works. So we've been thrilled to make that closed loop there. Now, as a transitional employer, our goal is to graduate and and send people out. Into full-time jobs at living wage and benefits. And we've had about sixty-five percent success rate. Um, not everyone is ready to work, some people have had deferred illnesses and what have you. We want to improve that rate, but most significantly, the recidivism rate. That I quoted earlier, sixty-five percent. Our recidivism rate has been under five percent. If you do the math, that's a ninety percent reduction in the recidivism rate. And again, this comes back to the vision of Mr. Taylor. Uh, like Ms. Cass, I doubt. There are many people who've used their time in Greaterford and now Phoenix as productively or with as much impact as Mr. Taylor. And he's not wavered in his enthusiasm and commitment to the post-release population. After helping having birth PAR Recycle Works. He's talked enthusiastically about developing and building a housing program when he gets out. And I was pleased to inform him that we have the the seeds for that in a partnership with another not-for-profit. That has gotten grants to rent houses and um, I could almost hear him doing cartwheels over the phone when I told him that. He said, I can't wait to get my hands on it and grow it and just help serve more and more people. So we look forward to mentoring and being mentored by Mr. Taylor. Should you hopefully uh, grant him his release and helping him to focus on his housing dream. The reentry zone that he envisioned was was captured in a painting by one of the gentlemen at Greaterford. And it's got a backdrop of some row houses in the center of the street with a, a company and a housing and and uh, services. And I'm proud to say that he gave us that picture when PAR Recycle Works started. And that proudly sits in our community room where our people meet every day uh, for debriefings and and for sharing. There's a move. In the reentry employment arena known as second chance hiring. And we implore and applaud the initiative. Though for many people in that reentry community, it actually represents what I would say truthfully is a first chance. And I think this release would represent for Mr. Taylor. A second first chance in the same way that he is a new man and a different man than than went in many, many years ago. He understands this. And knows upon his release, he'd be entering a world where he'd both be giving and receiving support. And would have a ready reentry community in Philadelphia to offer support. To him personally and emotionally, as well as to his project. We believe and I'll conclude that the societal goals of Mr. Taylor's incarceration have been more than met. He's not only served his time, but engineered a personal transformation. That's reflective of the kind of character we envision or desire for all of our citizens in in the corrections system. And he's given much to the broader population and has the vision, enthusiasm and focus to continue to make that happen. We welcome his return. And I have to use this image, we can't wait for him to leave Phoenix and spread his wings again. So thank you for allowing me to speak on his behalf.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sears, we'll turn it over to you to give your statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon to the Honorable Members of the Pennsylvania Board of Pardon. I'm Diane Sears, Chair of the Commutation Support Committee for Mr. James W. Taylor. Member of the National Association of Reentry Professionals, Inc. An Advisory Council Board Member of SCI Phoenix Lifers, Inc. An Inside-Out Reentry and Restorative Justice Think Tank. And Managing Editor of In Search of Fatherhood, which is a fatherhood and men's issues publication. That publishes the literary works of incarcerated fathers throughout the United States. This is something that we've done for two decades. I'm here today to present a summary of my testimony supporting commutation for Mr. Taylor. Who has met the constitutional criteria for the recommendation and granting of commutation. Pursuant to forty-two Pennsylvania Consolidated Statute, Section twenty-one, four fifty-five. And the criteria considered by the Pennsylvania Board of Pardon for recommending. Commutation to incarcerated United States citizens, which includes rehabilitation. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about uh, Mr. Taylor. During his fifty-three years of incarceration, Mr. Taylor has demonstrated that he is rehabilitated. That he is not a menace to society and that he will be an asset to society when he is released. He has a stellar record, no disciplinary action, no write-ups for fifty-three years. While incarcerated, Mr. Taylor earned an associate degree in Business Administration and Accounting for the Pennsylvania Business Institute. He also completes a Correspondence Course in Short Story Writing, which was offered by the Writers Digest School. For nine years, Mr. Taylor taught Threshold, a problem-solving and decision-making course. Which I understand been coordinated in nineteen seventy-nine. And which I also understand was exported to other state correctional institutions. Throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as a component of a treatment program. He also served as a tutor in the Prison Literacy Project. Mr. Taylor is the founder of People Advancing Reintegration, which is known as PAR. Uh, which was established in nineteen eighty-nine at SCI Greaterford, which is now SCI Phoenix to reduce recidivism. He co-authored the Day One Parole Preparation Course, which is a curriculum. That helps prepare incarcerated individuals for employment upon their returns to society. He received the Pennsylvania Prison Society's Prisoner of the Year Award in recognition of his establishment of PAR. In twenty sixteen, Mr. Taylor's initiative became a nonprofit organization that employs formerly incarcerated individuals. But this time under a new name, People Advancing Reintegration, Recycle Works. During his incarceration, Mr. Taylor was granted escorting leave twice. To receive the Prisoner of the Year Award from the Pennsylvania Prison Society. In recognition of his establishment of People Advancing Reintegration. And to seat at Philadelphia Academy of Natural Sciences on behalf of educating children for parenting. To reduce barriers to successful reintegration that confront young incarcerated men upon their returns to society. Mr. Taylor created an initiative, Project Pipeline to Prison Youth, Reclaiming Their Lives as Men. The initiative offers curriculum-driven mentoring sessions to young incarcerated men. That is designed to positively transform their decision-making and behavior. It's an initiative that Mr. Taylor will export to the community where he will work and reside when he is released. With the help of community stakeholders. Mr. Taylor is a key member of SCI Phoenix Lifers, Inc. A highly acclaimed Inside-Out Reentry and Restorative Justice Think Tank. That has with thirty-five years, designed research-driven and solution-based initiatives. That help address and reduce recidivism. Intergenerational incarceration, gun violence and street crime. In twenty twenty, Mr. Taylor and his colleagues helped to facilitate the implementation. Of the Lifers, Inc. Public Safety Initiative with assistance from an external team comprised of community stakeholders. The initiative became a thirteen-week gun violence intervention uh, and prevention and reduction. Reduction initiative known as the Middle Neighborhoods at Risk Youth and Young Adult Mentoring Program. A branch of Lifers, Inc. Public Safety Initiative External Affiliation. Which was approved and funded by the City of Philadelphia Office of Violence Prevention. Implemented in the Cobb's Creek Section of West Philadelphia, beginning on February twenty-second, twenty twenty. The thirteen-week gun violence prevention, intervention and reduction initiative. Was unfortunately among the many initiatives suspended by the City of Philadelphia on March twenty-third, twenty twenty. Due to the Corona twenty nineteen pandemic. Currently, Mr. Taylor is developing his vision for a crime-free, gun-violence-free. And business-driven reentry zone that will provide formerly incarcerated individuals. With housing, employment, vocational and entrepreneurial training, clothing and transportation. The reentry zone will also provide at-risk youth and young adults with vocational and entrepreneurial training. Through Project Pipeline to Prison Youth, Reclaiming Their Lives as Men. Which will be exported to the gun-violence-free and crime-free, business-driven reentry zone. His positive actions demonstrate his remorse by making amends to society. I and the people that I know who have interacted with Mr. Taylor do not believe that he is capable of murder. He that he's not capable of committing murder, rather. Continuing the incarceration of Mr. Taylor will serve no purpose, as he does not pose a danger to society. His continued incarceration as punishment is no longer required. And constitute cruel and unusual punishment pursuant to the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution. And Section thirteen of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The purpose of com- commutation is to correct an injustice in sentencing. Clearly, the Board of Pardon's recommendation of commutation and a lifelong parole sentencing. For Mr. Taylor would fulfill the purpose of commutation by correcting the injustice in sentencing. That occurred in his case. Clearly, it's a legal principle of diminished capacity has had been mounted in Mr. Taylor's defense. Due to his highly, due to his high level of intoxication. A jury would not have rendered a guilty verdict for murder and a mandatory life sentence without parole. I will email my full testi- testimony to you for your review. But before I conclude, I would like to say, my full testimony supporting the commutation. Of Mr. James W. Taylor is based upon the constitutional criteria. For recommending and granting commu- commutation pursuant to forty-two Pennsylvania Consolidated Statute. Section twenty-one, four fifty-five. The Pennsylvania Board of Pardon's criteria for recommending commutation in case law. Hennessy versus Pennsylvania Board of Pardon, six fifty-five, Atlantic Second, two eighteen. Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court, nineteen ninety-five. Clearly, Mr. Taylor incontrovert- incontrovertently meets all of these criteria. I would like to proceed, if I may. The constitutional criteria for commutation in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is governed by forty-two Pennsylvania Consolidated Statute. Twenty-one, four fifty-five, which provides guidelines. by 42 Pennsylvania Consolidated Statute, 21455, which provides guidelines for parole upon being recommended for it and granted commutation of a life without parole sentence. Mr. James W. Taylor would serve a lifelong parole sentence.
Ms. Sears?
Yes.
Why don't we wrap up? I think the board would probably like to go to some other folks.
And back there, I will wrap up. I would like to wrap up by citing case law, which, and it's very brief, which sets out the criteria and a compelling reason why Mr. Taylor should be granted commutation in addition to his stellar record, the contributions that he has made to positively enhance his environmental institution, and the contribution that he has made to society. Hennessy versus Pennsylvania advises that the Board of Pardons is a component of the of the parole and pardon structure of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I'm quoting Justice, Commonwealth Court Judge Honorable Rochelle S. Friedman, who wrote this opinion. It was a dissenting opinion. At the threshold matter, it is important to realize that the Pardons Board, to the extent that it considers application to commute life sentences to lifelong parole, is part of Pennsylvania's uniform and exclusive system of parole. As such, the Pardons Board must use applicable standards for parole eligibility in deciding whether to recommend or deny an application for life or parole. When a prisoner is serving a life sentence, based on standards, that prisoner justifiably expects that the Pardon Board decision will be fair and according to law in this way. The Pardons Board decision will be fair and according to law in this way. Pennsylvania's commutation parole system provides an incentive to prisoners to reform themselves and strive to earn an opportunity to be at liberty in society. Now, prior to the adoption of the Parole Act in 1941, the governor appointed a special commission to study parole in Pennsylvania. The commission's report stated, the commission disapproves all, the commission disapproves the suggestion that is frequently advanced that the apparently confirmed criminal should be incarcerated for life for the protection of society. There may be particular instances to which this becomes necessary, but the right of the individual to an opportunity to work out his own destiny and well-being at liberty and in accordance with law outweighs any supposed right of society to deprive him of this opportunity upon the mere fear of assumption that he will again trespass the law.
Ms. Sears, I now move along. I just, I was hoping to add for the board that I've spoken to many other people in Mr. Taylor's support system as well, and they're also streaming this hearing today.
And again, I would just like to add, again, I will be sending the full testimony by email to the board. And I would say, thanks to the board for providing me with an opportunity to give my testimony today at the Public Hearing for Commutation for Mr. James W. Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant District Attorney Boyett or any other, or from the Corrections Facility, any other comments?
No, Lieutenant Governor, but if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey, do you have anything you wish to add?
Nothing further.
Thank you. With that, the board will retire to executive session.